Okay, seeing as we're all here now, this is the special meeting of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Commission. Today is March 7th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mary speaking.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in our nation and the government of the people.
Thank you, you may be seated. Madam Recording Secretary, please take your call.
Commissioner Awainaga?
Present.
Commissioner Garcia?
Present.
Commissioner Perez?
Present.
Commissioner Ramos? Commissioner Santana?
I'm sorry, did you call my name? Did you say Commissioner Ramos?
Yes.
Present.
Commissioner Santana? Commissioner Erzuwa? Commissioner Tardif?
Present.
Commissioner Lamone?
Present.
And Commissioner Fraser?
Present.
Commissioner Vasquez?
Present.
Thank you. Seeing a quorum, the meeting is officially called to order. This is time for the Commission to consider matters under Consent Calendar. Items include item number one. Do any members have any corrections to the minutes, items they wish to pull for separate discussion, or abstaining on? Do you all have any minutes? Were we to receive a copy of the minutes?
I'm sorry, Chairmanwoman Ramos, I didn't realize that the minutes weren't attached to your agenda item. We will correct that and bring it to your agenda for March 27th.
Okay. So, we're going to move on to the Work-Study session, since we don't have minutes to review. We will now consider matters under the Work-Study session. The first item on the Work-Study session is item number two. Staff will provide three scenarios of community development block grant, CDBG funding, for Commission recommendations.
Are you just, excuse me, my...
Yes.
Are you using my microphone?
Yes, I am. Would you like me to speak into a little more?
Oh, you're speaking a little too quick. Where are we?
Okay, I'll repeat that. So, we're going to move on to the Work-Study session?
Yes.
So, now we will consider matters under the Work-Study session. The first item on the Work-Study session is item number two. In our packet, it's listed as number one. Staff will provide three scenarios of community development block grant, CDBG funding, for Commission recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking. Staff ready to?
Yes, we are. So, I want to start with a general overview of how we got here, and then summarize the next steps. So, as you know, the Commission reviewed and approved the application that we issued for our CDBG Public Service Funds in October. And then, we brought that application to our City Council in December. And then subsequently, we issued that application to all the nonprofits, and made it fully available in January. And then, the application deadline was in February 1st, right? February 1st? February 4th? And then, we reviewed the application, and then provided them to the Commission to score. And then, on February, I think it was 26th and 28th, the Commission heard all the presentations by the nonprofits that submitted an application in two public hearings held over eight-hour period. And now, we are here today for the Commission to deliberate, convene, and collaborate on a collective decision to fund the organizations that have applied for assistance from the city through our CDBG program. You join the ranks of hundreds of other Commissions across the country in this extremely important process for the allocation of these very limited funds for nonprofit organizations in our community. So, staff, we're going to start by providing you with a very detailed explanation of the documents that you have in front of you today. We are going to provide as much detail as possible in terms of these documents to try and answer any questions you may have before you begin to review and deliberate upon those documents. And then, we are going to seek direction from you on your funding recommendation for our CDBG Public Service Funds in the amount of $872,543. Once we receive your final direction at today's meeting, you are not going to take a vote, but you're going to provide us with your direction. We will return to the Commission on March 27th for you to vote upon the final allocation of our Public Service Funds. Your vote will then go to our City Council for final approval. I ask, and we ask, that you provide as clear a direction as possible, that our vice-chair isn't here, but our chair, that you assist the Commission to ensure that the direction is as clear and effective as possible, so that staff fully understand the direction by the Commission, and that we are then able to finalize the funding, and then return to the Commission for your vote on March 27th. We don't have very many members of the public in the room with us, although the meeting is recorded. The purpose of this meeting is for you to deliberate, collaborate, convene, and make a collective decision. You have each scored the applications independently, and now, it's your opportunity to make a collective decision on behalf of our community, and on behalf of the nonprofits that have submitted an application. So, your participation in the deliberation is extremely important. That's the purpose of today's meeting.
Judson, before you begin reporting back, just because we do have members of the public present today, I would like to see if they would like to provide any public comments before the staff report. Did you all want to say anything today? Okay.
No. Excuse me, my... What organization are you related to?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, with that said, Mikell will present the information that you have in possession.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today and participating in this process. I want to especially, I want to acknowledge that the documents that we are going to go over, all of the information that's in there, is based on information that was provided by voting members on the Commission. I want to also acknowledge and thank Commissioners, Tenant Commissioners Fraser and Vasquez, for participating in the process, and also, the rating that Student Commissioner Lamone provided, because this is all very important information to help the low-income residents of Santa Ana. So, I'm going to, I'm not sure I said my name. My name is Mikell Daly, and I'm a Community Development Analyst. I'm new. I know you've seen me, but I just thought I'd say, I work on the CDBG program with David Flores. Okay. And so, we're going to move on, and what we're going to do is, you can see it either on the screen or on the documents that you have with you. We'll start with the largest document, and I'm going to explain this in detail, starting from the top-left, going to the right, and then down the document.
Hold on one second. We have copies for...
Thank you.
So, again, we're reviewing this lengthy document here.
So, this document is a summary of the information that we received from the Commissioners. And if you start in the top-left corner, you can see the ratings that were provided, and they are ranked in order from highest to lowest. If you move over, sorry, if you move over to the right, starting from the left. So, we received ratings from five Commissioners, and their ratings are noted here. The red highlighted column is the average of all of the ratings that we received. Moving to the right, the name of the organization, and the amount that they were requesting for funding. And then, going on to the rest of the document, those are the funding amount recommendations by each of the Commissioners. And the blue column is the recommended funding by the Commissioners combined, so it's an average of all of the amounts that are provided. And then, there's a running total over on the side. And the reason why that's important is, as Judson mentioned, the total funding that we are expecting from HUD for this year is $872,543. And so, it's a countdown to show where we hit approximately that number, how many organizations we'd be able to fund. So, going back over to the left and down into the document, if you notice these red highlighted under the funding recommendations, anything that's highlighted in red as a funding amount is an amount that's less than the minimum funding that we provide. So, $30,000 is the minimum funding. And so, if the Commissioner suggested an amount less than $30,000, it is highlighted in red on this document.
A question?
Yes.
Were the other Commissioners aware that they could actually put down less than the minimum dollar amount?
We're actually going to have a discussion after I go through all of the presentation, and then, we can consider those types of questions.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. I meant to say that in the opening. I'm sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Okay, so, the zero amount is, so, just to let you know, if somebody, if you look here next to Charitable Ventures of Orange County, there's a blank. There's no red amount. That amount was not considered in the average, because it was left blank. However, if the Commissioner did provide an amount, even if it was zero, that is included in the average. So, that would be reflected in the average Commissioner funding recommendation. And then, moving back over to the left, let me see if I've missed anything else.
Commissioner number six.
Oh, Commissioner number six. So, at the bottom of the document, there are two asterisks. So, we have five Commissioners that provided ratings and funding recommendations. Commissioner six only provided funding recommendations, and that's why you see five on the left and six on the right. And also, I already touched upon the second double asterisk of the zeros are included in the averages. And a note about the very bottom of the document, Orange County Fair Housing Council. We fund fair housing through administrative funds, administrative CDBG funds. They are not included in the Public Services cap, which is 15%. HUD always recommends that you find other areas to fund organizations, if possible, so that more funds can be allocated to the Public Services, 15% maximum. And that is why the fair housing is separated out. The amount that we fund them does not distract from the other organizations. Okay, so, we're going to move right on into scenario one.
I have a quick question. I'm a little bit confused about Commissioner number six only providing recommendations for funding.
Yes.
So, again, yeah, the Commissioner number six only provided their recommendations for the funding amounts, and they did not score the applications. We determined, based on that arrangement...
Can we, can they do that, though? I mean, how do we know they reviewed the application?
So, well, yes, we did confirm that they did review the applications. But, we did consider that matter, and we did not have an issue if they only decided to give us their funding recommendations instead of their scores. We decided to include it, include it as part of the average of the funding recommendations.
I don't think it's ever happened before, just because I've done these a few years.
Yeah, no, if the Commission, if the majority of the Commission wishes to remove Commissioner number six's average, from the average, that's something that staff can consider.
Thank you.
Will you talk about the...
Do you want to talk about that item now?
If you want to speak on that now, we can. If anybody would like to recommend, make a recommendation of any sort of...
Well, my recommendation would actually let the presentations finish, and then, kind of take a look, because I think there's a lot of questions that will come up. So, I think that's something to kind of write down to get back to, but I want to respect the process, and kind of finish off this presentation, because there's multiple proposals that were going to be shown, correct?
Right, three scenarios.
So, is it okay to wait, then?
Yes, of course. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, just keep that item in wait.
So, I'm a little confused about, I'm sorry, I'm probably right, but I'm Commissioner three, right?
We don't have to name ourselves if we don't want to.
Don't record that, okay.
So, I believe staff provided us with our individual recommendations as well.
Okay.
And we're the only ones that have that, so we don't know who is who.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you so much. So, I see that laughing, you guys say what? I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't want to make you laugh.
Thank you.
Moving on to scenario one, if you want to look at, scenario one, it's at the top of one of these sheets. Scenario one is the Commissioner's recommendation, and you can tell which column that applies to, because the column is in blue. So, scenario one goes by, so, let me start at the left, just the same as the other document. The evaluation score is on the left, and it starts from the highest, goes to the lowest. You move over, you can see the organization and how much they requested. This recommended amount by the Commission is the average amount of all the amounts provided, including all six amounts, the running total on the side. And in addition, on this document, you have basically a running total except for going negative. So, we can see how we are running out of funds based on the amount that we are expected to be funded this year. Looking at the red in the document, any application that shows a red in the recommended funding amount, these recommended funding amounts by the Commission are less than the minimum funding requested by the nonprofit. And so, those are noted there.
And let me expand on that. So, again, the, under CRHC Recommended Application Funding, which this is, this scenario here, if the organization is highlighted, if the amount is highlighted in red, that's because it's less than the amount that the organization requested. So, let's take the Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts Center as an example. The Orange County Children's Therapeutics Arts Center requested on their application that the minimum amount that they're requesting is $70,000. The CRHC Recommended Application Funding is $68,333. So, why is that important? The organization indicated to the Commission that this is the amount that they need, and that they're requesting, the minimum amount that they need and they're requesting to administer their program. Okay? Therefore, we are bringing it to your attention that the amount that the Commission is recommending is less than that they're requesting to administer their program on behalf of our community, and on behalf of the Commission. So, when we, if the, so, we will discuss that further, but the implications of that is that if we return to OCTAC, okay, and we state, "The Commission is recommending you for $68,000," they may say, "We cannot administer the program for $68,000. We can only administer it for $70,000, and therefore, we have to decline the award." We will discuss that a little further, but I do want to, I did want to bring that, highlight those items, the funding amounts in red for you, and expand on that.
Okay, and then, moving on into the document, you can see that there are a number of organizations that are highlighted, and then, there's a red dotted line at the bottom of them. Those are the organizations we'd be able to fund based on the funding that we expect for this year. And that is a total of 19 organizations. And if you look over to the right at the, the right of YMCA of Orange County, it shows a figure of $7,936.17. That's how much we have left out of the, now, I've lost it, $872,543. So, that's how much we have left after funding YMCA of Orange County and the other 18 organizations. This other number to the right, $417, that's simply the $7,900 divided by 19, and then, the idea is, this is an option to give $417 equally among the organizations that would be funded, to get a zero amount and expend all of the grant funds. It's just an option, and that's why it's on there. So, I'm going to move on to scenario two. Scenario two, same setup on the document. This one is sorted, or the scenario is based on the applicant requested funding, and the applicant requested funding is higher than the Commissioner's recommended funding, which is why there are fewer organizations shown as funded if we go with this scenario. There's a total of 12 organizations funded if we take this scenario into consideration. And if you look at where it stops, you notice that there are two organizations, Nati's House and CASA. They're both rated the same, 83.8. And so, the reason why Nati's House is listed in the funded organizations, and CASA is not, is because our goal is always to expend all of the grant funds. Nati's House is asking for a higher amount, and based on this scenario, it would expend more of the grant funds. That's the only reason why they are listed above CASA, it's not because they don't rank them. And that's why it's highlighted in the yellow on the left, to make you aware of it. Over on the right, if you can see that, actually, after funding Nati's House, we have $36,000 left, which is enough to possibly fund another organization, and that would be a decision you could also consider. You could go down to CASA, and instead of funding the $50,000 they're requesting, you could fund a lower amount, an amount equal to the amount that's left. But that is another option that's part of this meeting, those kinds of discussions on what organizations you want to include. And once again, the $3,000 over to the side, that's just simply if you only want to fund the 12 organizations, $36,000 divided by 12, $3,000 left, and just evenly divide those among the organizations that are chosen in this scenario. And lastly, scenario number three. This is based on the applicant minimum requested funding. And so, the column for the minimum requested is highlighted in blue, and just like scenario one, the organizations where their minimum requested is more than the Commissioner's recommended is highlighted in red, so we can see the difference. Also, like scenario one, which is the Commissioner's recommendation, this scenario serves the same number of organizations, 19 organizations, with a remainder of, at the end, of $31,320. So, same thing, we could use that money to possibly go down to the next organization's second chance, and see if they are able to take that amount instead of their requested amount of $50,000, or we can divide it evenly among all the organizations. That's just another option. And also, did you mention staff's suggestion? Staff's suggestion?
Yeah, of course. Are you wrapped up? Okay. So, we have reviewed your, the raw data, right? Your scores, which we averaged, your funding recommendations, which we averaged. We've consolidated them into the three scenarios presented to you today. Okay? And upon our review of the scores, based on the scores and the average funding recommendations, our professional recommendation is scenario number three. Okay? A couple reasons why we are recommending scenario number three. Between scenario number one and scenario number three, you have the same amount of organizations funded. That's always a positive thing, right? You're able to walk away saying, "We funded 19 organizations today." Okay? But if you look at the difference between scenario number one and scenario number three, is that scenario number three funds each organization up to the minimum that they requested, and then, it leaves you with $31,000 to distribute to, either to distribute how you see fit to the 19, or to even fund an additional organization below that. So, you could potentially even fund 20 organizations with scenario number three. Scenario number one causes us, will cause us potentially issues. Okay? Particularly if you look at the Delhi Center, and, let's see, Nati's House, and the Delhi Center, Cielo, and the Delhi Center. So, the Delhi Center's minimum request is $68,461. The recommended funding for them is $52,000. That's substantially less than what they're requesting. Same for the Delhi Center, Albi, it's $11,000 less than what they're requesting. And then, Delhi Center, Cielo, is $35,000 less than what they're requesting. We have an email from the Delhi Center, Cielo? Is it for Cielo or Delhi Center?
I think it was Cielo.
Okay, we have an email from Delhi Center, Cielo, stating explicitly that if they're funded less, they will not be able to administer this program, because they won't be able to pay the teacher that they're looking to hire. Is that right, Mikell?
That's right. And it's Albi, I'm sorry. Delhi Center, Albi.
Delhi Center, Albi. Okay, so, they won't be able to afford, so, if they receive less than the $61,557 that they're requesting, they won't be able to fund the teacher that they're needing to hire for that program. So, scenario number three funds the same amount, same number of organizations, okay? Funds them at the minimum amount that they were requesting, and leaves you with $31,000 to redistribute as you see fit, as you see best. We, again, our professional recommendation, we've reviewed your scores, we've reviewed your funding recommendations, our professional recommendation is scenario number three. With that said, we are seeking, first, we are seeking direction from the Commission on your choosing either scenario one, two, or three, or another scenario as you see best. We have the spreadsheet, we can modify it as you see fit, right here on the spot. We may need to take a break, you know, in order to give us time to do that. But, we are, it is fully up to your discretion on how you would like to distribute, allocate, and award these limited funds. And then, we have two, we have two other items we need direction on after you decide on how to allocate the funds for you today.
Thank you. I want to bring back the question that the Commission had, and see if anybody wanted to make a recommendation on that. So, I'm referring to Commissioner number six, who only made funding recommendations, but did not rank the applications.
So, I noticed that their percentages are not included in what they can provide, which skews those numbers as well, because if we add their zeros in, which is essentially what we'd have to do, we'd have to divide by six Commissioners instead of the five that it is, we have nobody that made over a 77.83 on the percentages there. But that would be in keeping... But that would be in keeping with the adding Commissioner number six to the second group of statistics.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to comment on that? Or everybody can comment on it, actually.
Yeah, I think my issue, my issue and more that I think about it is, if there's no true rubric to determine what you give someone, it's all subjective. So, what I brought up at the last two meetings was also taking a look at how many people are actually meeting the HUD required meant for funding. And, I actually just brought my second, my second page, not the, of the first session. But of that, I'm looking at all these scenarios, we have one, two, three, four organizations here that significantly didn't meet their objectives. So I think anytime you have a type of grading system, you're going to get docked for, in a sense, being out of compliance the first year, or you're going to be disqualified. Now, I know that through an audit, we had some changes on how we looked at it, but I actually have an issue that we don't have a rubric when we graded these. And the second process is, what are we looking to do for those agencies that are not in compliance, even today, with their funding? To recommend them, I think, is a precedent that I would not support. And I think if we go back and take a look at those, let's say we dock them two percent, five percent, ten percent, whatever we decide, I think those scores should kind of go in. So let me give you an example. So, if I go to Wise Place, in seventeen eighteen, they were funded to serve forty, they only funded twenty-four. That's sixty percent of population they did not serve. This year, they're funded for forty, they've only served fifteen to date, which is thirty-seven percent. I don't see how we would not give them a two percent, five percent penalty in this grading process as we move it forward. Now that's just one example of multiple agencies that are, did not meet a requirement that I, I really think we need to take a look at. So, in regards to that specific question, that's an issue that I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. If the commission would like to, the staff have all of that information with them, all of the information that was shared with us at the last meetings. If the commission is interested in hearing which organizations have not complied, did not comply, did not comply in previous funded years, I think that would be important to share. The commission would like that information.
No, we don't, we don't have that information, it was provided to the commission.
Well, I have it right here.
Yeah, we have it in email.
So, we have it also in email. But, but I think some of our commission members had other responsibilities and duties, but I think they need that information so they can see it as well. I actually broke it down and color-coded it and so forth. But, if we can get a copy of that, it's the three-year that was sent to us. But I think that's going to allow our fellow other commissioners to see kind of what I'm talking about. Because I think hearing for the first time that someone only provided sixty percent last year, and they're at barely thirty-seven percent this year, however, we're grading them high on this funding source, I think is information that they need to know.
Well, we'll go, we'll go copy it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we can come back to that, thank you for that, Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Vasquez? Thank you, Commissioner Limon?
Yes, I have a question pertaining to Commissioner number six that only provided funding. How exactly does that happen?
In the application, you have an opportunity to provide a rate for each one of the questions. And then at the very bottom, you suggest a funding amount. And that was the only part of the application that had information as an answer.
So just to confirm, that commissioner did not rate the organization, right? They didn't click on the, the number of boxes?
There was, there was no rating and it wasn't, they weren't scored zero.
Okay. I, I just think in the future, we need to be really specific. I mean, we, I, I think we should make a decision about that and require each commissioner to rate each organization. That's such a big part of the process. And, we shouldn't assume, but I, I think it's inherent to the process that we are going to take that step. That's, you, you review the application, you rank it, and then you provide your recommended, recommended funding. I just don't, I'm trying to wrap my hand around that they didn't rank the organization.
I have a comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Antartis.
Can you tell us if this Commissioner number six participated in the applicant presentations? Whereas, some of the commissioners here were not present for any of the applicant presentations for two full meetings?
Yes, yes, they, that Commissioner number six did, did participate in the, in the presentations on the, the, the public hearings, the two public hearings that we held.
Right, and the purpose of those presentations is to bring their application to life and explain their program. But, these applications is where everything is included, every, every single detail that pertains to their application is there. And what we, what would we, or the things that we would need to know in order to rank that organization.
Commissioner Aginaga?
Just to move it forward, in past times, do you remember, Commissioner Garcia, we have a training in how to do this. But we also have specifications, and the staff were investigating the organizations to make sure that they were doing what they're supposed to be doing to do this, to get this money. Also, I believe that we were never a set, a family as an employees, because that was supposed to be a conflict of interest. I don't know if that's still in place, or we can kind of make a resolution as a commissioners. We can have a training next time. At this point in time, we have to move forward, I think. What are you thinking?
Commissioner Aginaga, can you elaborate on the conflict of interest in family? I, I don't know if I don't have the context, but I'm a little confused.
Well, there is some nonprofits that have families, the family working. And, and for instance, if it's one nonprofit that has the sister, the brother, the husband, everything, what does that tell you? Don't you think that that should be a focus of interest? It's a nonprofit, we're here to help the people. And it creates problems or conflicts among the clarity of the purpose of serving the people. Think about it.
Are there any nonprofits on these lists that you would like to name as those that you're concerned with?
Uh, no, no, I rather not do.
Thank you.
So, I just think that for the next time, for the future, we need to maybe make, we need to move, work and form a resolution or something before we do anything else.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Perez.
Thank you, Commissioner. So yes, there actually is organizations within here. If you actually look at the structure and you look at who the CEO is, they have family members that are actually part of their board, and they actually have family members that are actually being paid for some of these services. So I just completed my HUD training, and I know there is regulations. One question I would ask to city staff is, as we give out contracts, wouldn't they fall under the same federal guidelines and restrictions in regards to hiring family members as they're receiving HUD money?
Yes, they would fall under the, the same conflict of interest regulations that pertain to our city staff. So, yes, those, those regulations would apply to the sub-recipient.
So I think in looking then at some of our recipients, even past recipients, I, I think the question is, number one, have we taken a look at that? Because these applications, I wasn't here last year, but as I'm looking at these applications, and there is some that actually list family members as part of their board and part of their actual employment staff for these services. So I think that's something that we need to take a look at. I actually want to finish the, the first part of the conversation, and I would like actually to put a motion on the floor to actually take Commissioner six off this grid as far as our grading system. Because I agree, even being here and listening to individuals present is not the same thing as actually going through that process. So I think kind of removing that score. And, and real quickly as well, when we're grading, we're being asked very basic questions as far as their experience. Well, if someone's a licensed clinical social worker and they're providing social work, I have to grade them at a high score. But the real question is, have you worked with this population? What, what type of training do you have working in the city of Santana? And I think they don't lend to some of the information that's critical for me to actually grade them on a proper scale. And as I look at, you know, do they serve the strategic plan? It's really just a yes/no question. You know, so if I'm grading a ten, a fifteen, a six, or an eight, it's really just a yes/no. Where, when you really look at the evaluation piece, when you look at benchmark, I think that question is critical, because we're looking at, how are you coming back to this commission, to the city, and doing benchmarks to serve our students and our youth and our adults and our families? And how do we know it's working? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Aginaga's hand was up first of all.
Second, what, Commissioner?
Perez.
I'm sorry.
Perez. Perez? Perez.
Commissioner Perez, I'm sorry. There is something very, very, very important, and this is for the city staff, and I want you to please take it into consideration. I don't know if we have enough staff, because I know that we are creating free competition and money-wise, the city is, but enough staff to actually investigate and follow up the nonprofit organizations who are asking for money and make sure that the people that they said that they're serving are okay. Like, for instance, if they say that, oh, I, we put this person into rehab, he was in drugs, he was in jail, he was in and out, now this person is great, okay? True, but, yes, make sure to, to confirm that it's true, that what they're saying is true. So we need more people, whatever we need to do in, in the city to be able to do this job, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Just a quick question to our staff with regards to Commissioner number six. So I, I just wanted to hear a little bit more from you as to why you thought it was okay to include that. I mean, I don't want to discount, I, I trust your, your recommendation, but I want to know what your rationale was for allowing Commissioner six their recommended funding. Without taking that, that, that extra step, that was, to me is really important.
Okay, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that. So, Commissioner, Commissioner number six conducted a, participated in the, in the, both, both presentations, both four-hour presentations by the, by the nonprofits. And, the fact that they only provided their funding recommendation is a, is a relatively minor component of your overall decision. Because if you see how the scenarios are, are, are drawn out, they're drawn out based on, based on your evaluation scores. And so their score of zero, it, it, it doesn't affect your, how, how the organizations are sorted. And then, lastly, lastly, our professional recommendation for scenario number three doesn't, it, it, it goes directly to the applicant minimum requested funding. And, and so again, their, including their scores really has a minimal impact on your collective decision. And, and just, in, in terms of considering that, that issue by staff, my initial inclination was to, was to remove their scores, but when I looked into it further, my professional recommendation is to include their, include their, their, their funding recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there, there is a motion that was made, and there was a second. I don't know that we need to go through the formal motion process?
We just need a collective, collective decision, it's not an official vote, so we just need a collective, how's that work?
Yes, it's a work-study session, so there's no formal votes taking place because it wasn't noticed as a recommended action that would require a vote. But, you know, obviously, you can take, you know, informal vote of, of the commissioners right now so that then that kind of direction can be provided to staff.
Thank you. So I would like for us to provide direction to staff. So Commissioner Perez is recommending that we exclude Commissioner six's funding recommendations. So if, if you are in support of that, if you can please raise your hand. So, raise your hand if you support excluding Commissioner six's funding recommendations because they did not rank the CBG applicants. Okay, so that's three of us. Please raise your hand if you do not want to exclude Commissioner number six.
I'll say why, it's because of the rationale he provided, so I'm going to say keep it.
Okay, so can you please raise your hands high if you do not want to exclude Commissioner six? Okay, so, Commissioner Vasquez and Commissioner Limon, did you all raise your hand for either?
I raised for the first.
Okay, Commissioner Limon, did you raise your hand for either?
I did not know I had the right to raise my hand, but I, given the logic behind it, I think it should be included.
It should be included, okay. But we're going to do it just one more time because now I'm confused.
There was a four, there was a four-four.
Four-four.
Four-four? Okay.
The unofficial vote doesn't pass.
Okay, so we will leave Commissioner six's number one. Commissioner Garcia?
Can we put it on the agenda, the future agenda to discuss that? So we specify in the future that they should? What the, what exactly steps I need to take in order to participate in this process?
Yeah, we could, what we'll do, we'll note it down so that next year when we bring the, bring the application, we make it explicit that if a score isn't provided, that, that we will exclude that score from the, from the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this because it's a lot of numbers for me. So the fact that, that Commissioner number six provided what they deemed was an adequate funding amount, we already know that the scoring on the left is subjective at best because there's nothing to measure it against. So we're, we're doing subjective measuring on this left-hand portion. So this is just what each commissioner, quote-unquote, feels about that particular entity. So I, I wonder why we're putting so much validity on that when we're also got over here how much that they think that that individual nonprofit should be funded, which I would think would be more important than how we feel about them. Do I understand that correctly?
The, again, the scenarios we provided are, are ranked based on the evaluations score?
Right, right, but, but as far as our decision-making process, I mean, even though that's a percentage, those percentages are based on subjective determinations by us when we go in to look at these, our familiarity with the nonprofit, how we feel that they affect the community, how we see or deem their resources affecting the community. That's what that first section is scoring, correct?
Yes, it's based on the scoring criteria that was provided in the, in the...
Which doesn't have a standard to be set against, does it?
So, Mikel?
I think you're getting back to what Commissioner Perez has suggested as a rubric, which we are working on something like that for the application next year. But I do want to just make mention that the applications, it is up to the nonprofits to convey... it is up to the nonprofits to convey the information to you to answer your questions so that you can score them appropriately. So it's not actually how you feel about the application. It's the information they provided in it that should help you score it accurately. Does that make sense?
Yes.
What you're, and Commissioner Frazier, if we weren't to sort based on the evaluation score, you'd be proposing an alternative to score based on the application funding.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not proposing an alternative to scoring. And I think that that helps us look at, based on how we scored where each one ranked. I just, I wonder if we're putting more weight on how Commissioner Two felt about Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts. If we're putting more weight on that than we are what they're recommending our funding amounts be?
Yes, the organizations are being ranked based on the scores that were provided. Yeah, yeah.
I just want to, I want to make a recommendation. I know I just heard that there is a rubric that is going to be created for the following year. So I would like to recommend that a committee be created of commissioners to start working on that rubric immediately after this process so that we don't have to wait until next year.
In past time, we have a training. Yes, we have just one day training and then we went from there. It's not really that hard. Because if you do, you do get homework and read the applications. And I very well involve the community. I know many of these applications. And some of that, some of us went to visit, four of them, right? So we know, oh, you went too, madam chair, right? So we probably know we just what they're supporting doing, so. It's up to each individual, right? So we'll do that training next year.
Yeah, maybe we can have just a general debrief of what this process was like immediately after. So maybe at the next meeting or the one in April. But I do want to move this conversation forward. I know Commissioner Frazier, you have a question.
Yes, so another thing that I just want to kind of understand. So if, let's take Delhi since they were brought up as an example of having a minimum funding scenario where if they received less than that, that they would not accept the award because that wouldn't be able to fund their program at all because it's a salary base. Is there a reallocations process at any point in time between now and the end of the award period that we look at? I mean, if a, if a entity is not performing and they're not serving the number of units or people or however they split that up, do we have a reallocation process to reallocate funding away from them to another individual that's performing or?
No, Commissioner Frazier, we do not have a reallocation process.
So if they, if we fund them at less than their minimum and they unethically accept the award knowing that they won't be able to fund their program, that's just kind of a wash then, right? That's because they're not going to be able to fund their program because we funded them at less than their amount. So they, how do we ensure that that money is going towards?
So our staff monitor, monitor the organizations on an annual basis. We also receive their invoices on a quarterly basis. So we're, throughout the year, we're seeing how each organization is progressing towards meeting their performance expectations under their grant agreements. And we also do, we do a desk monitoring and we do an onsite monitoring based on our risk assessment tool.
Thank you.
So I want to, Commissioner Jim Perez.
Yeah, thank you. That's the issue. We're monitoring them, but there's no consequence. So you don't meet your number, it's okay, apply again. Apply for the same amount of money. That's the issue. So I think we have the data for the last three years. Do we have that? I would love our fellow commissioners to see this. And I would like, in a sense, for us to say, we as commissioners, to say if you don't meet it for a year, we're going to impose a 5% reduction in your score per year, you know? Or whatever we agree on, if it's 2% per year, 3%. But I think this shows and gives us the data and the information as we look at, we're funding these organizations, are they actually doing the work?
Thank you.
May I ask something?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner. Aginaga.
Why do you, that some organizations, they asking for, you said, 75,000, right? For, and the same person is asking for another 75,000 claiming that he does two, two different organizations. I mean, two different.
Programs.
So, and then they don't accept less than the 75,000 when they can, okay, if they want that to serve 20 people, they can serve 50 people. It's just in the startup. Why do we have to give them what they want? You know what I mean? And in some cases, usually you come and says, you come and says it's okay because you're going to pay a teacher and you want to serve, you know, whatever, like in the case of the Delhi. It's just a question of analyzing situations and.
So if I, so if I may answer the, answer your question, we have a few organizations that submitted two, two programs for consideration by the, by the commission. Legal Aid submitted a program for domestic violence and for a program called Clean Slate. The Delhi Center submitted a application for a program called Teens Engage in Learning and Leadership, as well as a school break enrichment program, and then a family economic success initiative. And then Nathe's House submitted a, two programs for, one for Summer Night Lights and one for Neutral Ground. We did not prohibit an organization from submitting more than one application.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. So if we're, I just want to highlight Community Health Initiative, Orange County. So if we look at their numbers for fiscal year 17 through 18, it shows that they proposed to serve 1,275 people, but they only accomplished 732. So I believe that the day of their presentation, the applicant stated that those numbers were incorrect. I just want to confirm with staff whether or not those numbers are correct so that as we look at them, we're making judgments on your numbers.
Yes, so we did look at that and the numbers that we just provided to you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, actually, readily on that conversation is what I, what I started to do. So let's just stay with the Community Health Initiative, Orange County. So that means in 1718, we funded them for $52,000, but they only did 57% of the work. In 1819, as of right now, they're funded for $34,000. This, I believe, is reporting as of 123118, but they'd only had reached 61%. So again, I'm going to find it extremely difficult, and I don't know where they're on our chart, but I think they're pretty high up, is to take a look at, is this an opportunity to fund some new organizations that scored very well, that are doing some great work and giving them an opportunity? So I even will look at our top vote getter, America On Track. In 1617, they did a beautiful job. They were supposed to serve 20, they served 124. Great job. In 1718, they received $57,000. They were supposed to serve 235. They only served 161, 68%. At last year, this year, 45,000, serving 235. As of January 1st, they've only served 157, they're at 66%. Last year, they only served 68%. Now, we scored them high. Well, I'm going to argue that the rubric, they're going to score high. They're experienced, they know what they're doing. This data wasn't provided to us beforehand. We got it a little bit later. We did ask them why, what were some of the reasons? And some of them, they had some staff changes, they had some movements. However, I'm going to have an issue giving them that grade, that point system. I personally believe there needs to be a penalty per year of not meeting your services and numbers. And I think that truly allows us as a commission, someone, well, why did you refund them? Well, you know what, they're still doing a good job, they got a deduction on this point. And then maybe next year, we say, hey, if you haven't completed for the last two or the three years, if you not meet your number, you're ineligible to apply.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tardif. Thank you, Commissioner Perez.
I'd like to ask the staff if we have significant confidence that these organizations are self-reporting on the people that they serve, is that correct?
In the, in the application? David, yeah. So the numbers that you have are, are taken from their quarterly progress reports that they submit. So they submit four reports on a yearly basis and that's where we get these numbers.
All of these organizations are self-reporting, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have, I won't ask if we have absolute confidence that all of the organizations are reporting accurately. I'm just suggesting that perhaps the ones, some of the ones that are reporting not meeting their goal, their self-set goal, are honest. And maybe some of the other organizations that say they are meeting their goal, maybe what they're stating is not quite accurate. Is that possible?
That's a strong possibility, yes.
So it's all subjective, really? In my opinion, that's my opinion, and I'm not asking you that.
Sure. And on that note, let me just add that.
So I'm going to ask if you want to speak. You raise your hand or get my attention. Commissioner Perez raises his hand.
I'm going to respectfully disagree. There is HUD guidelines and restrictions that you have to meet to report. Some of the organizations that missed their number specifically stated, because of the guidelines and the restrictions, they were so hard. So when they're reporting this, are they following HUD guidelines and restrictions?
We believe that they are. So we do two monitoring, two styles of monitoring. We do a desk monitoring, so when we get the quarterly progress reports, we're looking at those reports to make sure that they're providing us a narrative, they're providing us history on what they're accomplishing for that quarter. And we also look at the numbers and we evaluate the number, their enrollment number versus the number that they stated they were going to serve on a quarterly basis. So that's the desk monitoring. Now, we also do a risk analysis on a yearly basis to, for nonprofits who we believe that are at high risk. And we contract with our contractors, MDG, to go out to those facilities and do a very detailed monitoring on, on those nonprofits. This year, five nonprofits were evaluated, they were monitored. There were no findings, there were no concerns, they were on target.
So I think the system is set up. We're having organizations come to us saying, we're having issues. The guidelines are so hard, we can't meet them. I love that, they're being honest, they're being upfront. So I don't think people are lying. I think the numbers are showing. But I think as we look at these numbers, we have to be realistic on, okay, can you do that work? And if you can't, okay. We have multiple agencies down below that scored high that we're like, hmm, we don't know if there's funding for them. We need to give people an opportunity, we need to give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Aginaga, did you still have a comment?
No.
Okay. I have a question for staff. So those of us that did, that did go through the ranking process had to answer very specific questions. Are those questions that were created by staff? Or are those questions that are provided by HUD for us to, to make the rankings on?
So those questions were created by staff based on the application. Yes, and I believe in October that was brought up to the commission. The commission approved the application, the evaluation questions, and we moved forward with that. Every single year, we intend to improve on the process. Like it was mentioned by my coworker, Mikel. We are working on a rubric for next program year. So we hope that it's going to make this process a little bit better. But the evaluation is what the commission had approved as well as the application.
Thank you. And I want to confirm with Jitson, did we see those evaluation questions? I remember that we were presented with an item to approve the CDBG application period being open, but I don't remember us being provided with the actual evaluation questions to review. And I don't remember us being asked for feedback on those. Commissioners that were here at that point, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep, so you were provided with the application and in terms of where you provided with the, with the question you would use to score the organization?
Yes.
That's the question, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, hold on one second. Okay, so you heard the item October 24th and no, you only saw the, you only saw the application that you were approved.
Thank you. So I would like to say that moving forward, I do think that the commissioners should help form those evaluation questions since we will be evaluating all those questions. And I would actually like for us to take a look at that immediately after this, immediately after we send our recommendations to the city council. So moving forward with where we are now, I know Commissioner Perez, it seemed like he wanted to make a recommendation to create a very specific consequence for those that have not met their numbers but are ranked high enough for them to receive some sort of funding. So I'd like to hear from Commissioner Perez if you have a specific recommendation.
Absolutely. I think we really can't do anything with the 1819 numbers because they're still in it and it's going to give them an opportunity to catch up. But I would recommend a 5% reduction if the last two years, they've actually missed their numbers. I think as I'm, I'm kind of taking a look and looking at it, it's not going to actually do a lot, but I think it does give us that opportunity to kind of see. As I'm looking and ranking them, it's not going to be a lot of movement. But I think it allows us that opportunity to say, you haven't meet your numbers, we took a 5% deduction. I think 5% is fair, it's not huge. It's, you know, right between 10 and 5. I first thought maybe a 10%, but I thought, okay, they didn't know, now they know and I think they got the word, we're going to take a look at your numbers. So that would be my recommendation.
So I'd like to clarify, are you proposing a 5% reduction in their ranking percentage or in their funding request?
In their ranking percentage? And I think that's, that will then show us, if there's any movement, then what the new organizations either move up or down. And so that would be mine, and I do have a question for staff after that.
So, and as you make that recommendation, can you please name those organizations that would receive this 5% reduction?
Yeah, I'm not done because I'm going through it, but I know America On Track would get a 5% reduction, Community Health Initiative, Orange County would get a 5% reduction right now. I'm still kind of going through it.
So I'll give you time to.
Perfect, thank you.
But I would like to hear from other commissioners to see what your opinion is on this. That this is something that, and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we could do if everybody on this commission is comfortable with that.
Yes, that, that's a scenario that we can run for the commission.
Thank you. So I would like to hear from every commissioner because this can have an impact on each of these applicants.
I'd like to comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tardif.
I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Perez. I don't believe that we have enough confidence in any of these numbers to penalize these people that amount. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif, so I'll come this way. Commissioner Aginaga.
With all due respect, Commissioner Perez. With all due respect, Commissioner Perez, some of these organizations are very reliable, and I know, and I did participate in a laboratory. And at this point, we don't know who's, the other people who says they met the, the goals that they said all these people are lying. So on the other hand, that make it, the, like, Commissioner Tardif said, that these people has been honest. So I really abstain this year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry, Commissioner Aginaga, are you, yes or no, or are you? You're not, you're not going to be included in the final, in the unofficial vote?
Well, can I just, before we do that though, I, I want to, we're not talking about a lot here. I, I think before we, I'm almost done. I, I think it's just six, and I don't think it's going to skew the data.
So I would like to just ask for, very quickly, some, can I ask? Can I ask staff for clarification? So once again, can you please explain to us this reporting process? If I'm an organization that is being funded, and I tell you I'm serving 100 people, how do I have to prove that to you? Are there, does each person being served have to fill out paperwork? Is there a way to ensure that they're not duplicate, that those are, those that are being served are 100 different individuals? What does that look like? So I think that may help a few commissioners maybe have more belief in these numbers or have zero belief in these numbers.
Sure. So our progress report consists of five pages. The first page has to do with reporting their actual numbers that, of participants that they're enrolling into their programs. The last page of that report is a, a list of clients. So when they enroll all the clients, they put them on that list, and that list is transferred over, automatically transferred over to the first page of that report. So for all of those clients that are enrolled on that list, they have to collect income verification, statistical information that HUD is requiring, and they have to keep a folder in their office of every single client that they're enrolling. So if their goal is 100 clients, hopefully by the end of the program year, they should have 100 files with all that documentation. We don't specifically go out to every single nonprofit, because we don't have staff capacity to do that. But once again, we do have a contractor, MDG, who goes out there and does monitoring for the organizations that are at high risk.
So in your opinion, would it, in your professional opinion, would it be difficult to falsify these numbers?
That's correct, because if they're falsified then, and if they're caught, they could potentially be asked to repay the money back to us. So there's a huge cost for falsifying and not having that proper documentation.
So would you say it is unlikely that these numbers are being falsified? It's okay if you don't want to answer.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. Well, that's my personal opinion, but no.
Yeah, we, 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 we don't have any opinion on whether or not the numbers are being...
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Shouldn't our opinion as a city be, yes, we believe in these organizations to have their number? I mean, to say, to not to say anything to me is scary. I think you know these organizations, these organizations you work with. You found no fraud, there's no reason for you to believe that these numbers would be wrong.
Based on the information we have in our possession, we, we trust the numbers that are provided to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia.
I wanted to ask, plus, we, we, we know that these nonprofits are audited, right? And they, they provide reports on their progress, that's through another ways as well. So I'm going to assume that you do look at that as well, as part of our process.
That's correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser.
So I, I have a trivial thing, and then I have, I kind of just want to look at the process. Is it possible to put the amount of total anticipated to be served on this three-year program funding history for the next time that we see it? Because we've got the total served on all of those, on all three years, but then we have the fiscal year 1920 requested, but it kind of, it would help to have the number of people that they're hoping to reach on the same report?
We could do that next year, yes, definitely.
Thank you. And I guess I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand if the, if, to Mr., to Commissioner Perez's point, if they're not meeting their self-proclaimed numbers, are they not meeting them because the reporting factors for HUD are so stringent? Or are they not meeting them because of fault with the program? Or I guess what is the reason why they're not meeting them is what I would be interested in, in knowing.
Thank you, Commissioner Fraser. So I think that that would be a very good question to add to our evaluation process. So did you meet your numbers in previously funded years? And if not, why? And we did have some applicants explain why they didn't meet their numbers during the presentation. So I know...
It seems like it was a lot of...
Definitely, yeah. And then a few other individuals mentioned transitions in staff and a few other issues that they faced. Commissioner Aginaga.
I have an idea. Commissioner Perez, it's a great idea of what you're saying, but this is like a new thing. So if we can give them that word and tell them that if they don't meet the goals of the people that they consider, they're going to get reduced, 5% or whatever we come up with. I don't know what you think.
Can I comment on your comment? Does it say?
Go ahead, Commissioner Tardif.
I think to put a penalty like that on the organizations, it gives a reverse incentive to be honest. I also think that the numbers are there, and commissioners likely, I know I did, take that into consideration already, that they didn't meet their previous numbers. So therefore, maybe their score was lower. Maybe the amount recommended to be distributed to them is lower. So that could already be baked into the cake. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. I wanted to see if Commissioner Vasquez or Commissioner Limon have any comments or questions for us? I haven't heard from them yet. Go ahead, Commissioner Limon.
I agree with Commissioner Perez to some extent. I feel as if programs should get a penalty, they should get like 5% dot dot. But I feel like there should be a section in the application that's more than one question. So for example, the first one would be, did the program reach your quota? And then the second one would be, is the program capable of reaching the quota now? And questions along that.
Thank you, Commissioner Limon. Commissioner Vasquez?
Well, I agree with my fellow commissioners as far as what she said.
Thank you. And then I, I want to make a comment, I haven't spoken yet on this. But I, I also agree with Commissioner Perez. I think it is unfortunate that we didn't pick on, pick up on this sooner and that we didn't make recommendations to staff to include this in that evaluation and ranking process. But I don't think it's too late to maybe rectify some of the mistakes that we've made. And I, I don't think five, well, we can see what this 5% would look like and would play out like. But I have complete faith in these numbers. I don't believe that they are being falsified after hearing staff give their explanation on how those numbers are, are provided and the verification that goes through it. And there is a contractor that is tasked with ensuring that these numbers are real, and these organizations understand the repercussions that would come with falsifying these numbers. I, I have no doubt that these numbers are real, so I also really want to go based off of these. And I'd like to hear what commissioners think specifically on this, on this topic of, or of giving 5% deductions. So if everybody has commented on that, I would like, I would like for us to take an informal vote. So if we are comfortable with that deduction, we can then see what, how the rankings would change. And if we're not comfortable with that, as a, as a commission, as a majority, then we don't even have to worry about it, and we can move forward with providing recommendations to staff. So is there anyone that wants to give any last comments on that before we take an informal vote? Go ahead, Commissioner Fraser.
I'm just curious, if, if we're offering up to a 5% penalty for not making the numbers, does that add value to incentivizing achieving your numbers then? Is there something that we're, we're willing to kind of buffer in for, for people who make their numbers consistently?
Can I answer?
Go ahead, Commissioner Perez.
I think that's the reason they receive their money. That's, I mean, the reality is, is if you go to school and you take a test, you're going to get a grade because you deserve an A. You got a C. If you got a D, you need some re-improvement, you're going to need some help. But it's, it's really the work that you did. We're giving you the funds to do this work. And if you did it, thank you. And what's your reward is the continual understanding of the work that you're doing, so.
Thank you. Are there any last comments on this before we take an informal vote?
I think that we should wait for, to let it know for next year.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Aginaga. So everybody can participate in this informal vote. If you would like to move forward with Commissioner Perez's recommendation of doing a 5% reduction on the, their ranking for those that did not meet their numbers in the past, please raise your hand and raise it high. Four, okay.
Four to four.
Those that are in opposition to this recommendation, please raise your hand high. So there's a difference. You don't have to, if you're not in opposition, you can abstain.
I, I just think that we should do it for next year.
Yeah, I, I have the same sentiment. I feel like it's...
We cannot go just the last minute.
Yeah, I have, I have the same sentiment. I feel like this is a...
Yeah, that's right, so you would raise your hand.
Five.
Okay.
Okay, so if you are opposed to this recommendation today, please raise your hand high.
For this recommendation today?
Today.
We're going to do it for next year. We are going to do it.
This is, the, the problem is going to be this.
Yeah.
We keep going 4-4. If we could have done it next, earlier, we would have. We didn't. We're here at 4-4. We keep going 4-4. We're going to have to make decisions to move a process. So I think respectfully, we want to look at where can we agree, where can we move a little bit? Because let's say we keep going 4-4, well then 4-4, 4-4, 4-4, we're not going anywhere. So we had one already 4-4, we're back to...
So I think we're at 4-3.
I think we're at 4-3, too.
We're at 4-3 as of now, so...
So what?
The, if, so if you, you can choose to abstain, you don't have to raise your hand, but by raising your hand, you lose your right to that vote. So if we're at 4-3, we have a simple majority, and we can move forward with Jim Perez's recommendation.
Okay. So we have a 4-3 vote. Commissioner Vasquez, you didn't vote, correct?
Because I have a question, is this going to slow down the award process?
Uh, this is... So, I'm sorry. This is, we're going to, we're going to run this scenario right now, and you'll be able to see it on the screen.
So with that, with that knowledge, Commissioner Vasquez, do you feel comfortable with your abstention? I'll take the vote again. So this will be the final informal vote.
Just real quickly, it shouldn't, it's, the, this is part of the process. So no, we want to move. That's why we're moving this forward. We're moving the process forward. So... Yeah, they, I already actually have it calculated, but they're going to calculate it as well. So we're going to see exactly what that number looks like.
So just so it's clear and to ensure that we're including everyone, if you are okay with moving forward with Commissioner Perez's recommendation, knowing that it will not slow down the process, please raise your hand high.
Well, if it doesn't slow down, excuse me.
Okay, so now we're at, we, we have five, we're over that simple majority. So we are adopting Commissioner Perez's recommendation.
Unofficially. And Steph, we're going to rerun this, rerun the scenario. If you could just give us a couple, a couple minutes here. If you want to take a, say, a five-minute break?
Are we running the scenario three, or are we running all?
All of them.
Actually, yeah.
Well, actually, can I make a recommendation on that as well? Because I think that's part of that process, is I, I think you're going to have to do all. Well, to be honest with you, you're going to have to all of them. We have to look at all of them.
Yeah, I say all of them.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
So would you all like, would everybody, does staff need a five-minute break?
Yes, yes, please.
And commissioners, thank you for, for entertaining that discussion.
Thank you.
We're going to be okay next year, don't worry about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think that they've known for the last three years that they haven't met their numbers, so I don't think this will surprise any of the nonprofits that they've been penalized for not meeting their numbers.
So what are we doing now?
You have five minutes to do whatever you would like, without hurting yourself or others. This is much closer. More intense.
To which organizations?
So essentially, what it means is, this is the money that the program is requesting to fund, to be funded by. And so this is the amount of money that we, that we are able to give. And as this program asks for this, we're basically adding all of this together. So 54,167 plus 42,500 would add up to this. And then as this program demands, it's basically...
We can do right here, it's...
How much is this paid?
A gross amount, yes. And how much the money is amounted to so far. So all the money requested would be this, all the money in total.
What does, this thing, is... Is that the same thing?
I think so, because the reply of Commissioner indicates the cut for, this is the amount, this is how many programs are able to be funded.
Hey, that'd be great, man. Just black.
Oh, I asked her about this.
That's okay. So, look at this.
I get it. It's just been spent. Then I want... Yes. That's a lot, because I look at it, well, I guess that's what adds up across the rows, huh?
Right. So we're looking at this column here, so it's adding everything up. So as we're entering amounts in here, it's added. And then if we're going to fund $872,000 for this coming year, then this tells us that we could only fund at this level.
D2 plus E1.
So we can't go beyond that.
That's what I meant, that's all the money.
Because I think E1, so that's C3.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, how you doing?
I'm running for the school board again. So the question is, what do we do?
Okay, on for the open election?
Right, so we're suggesting that if you divide that, you know... All the nonprofits are recommending to be funded, which is late term. So it gives us $417,000. So it's suggesting that we give back $417,000.
So you know what, actually, you see American Conference was an increase. They dropped down to an 88. It's like an 80. So they dropped a five, but if I looked at all of them, y'all didn't drop. So it's not an official, went from a 92 to 87, which is a 5%. And then we got that, Orange County, went from a 92 to 87. But they went down to the boys' girls club. They went from a 83 to a 79. It should be a 78, shouldn't it? 83 minus 5. I'm not understanding why this number didn't do that. Because they originally were 83.2.
Yeah, but this is going to be in that large election.
And then if you look at even this one...
The whole city votes on it.
So we're giving them a 5%.
Because that's how he was elected. He was elected out large, the whole.
Because I think a 5, because I...
In 2020, what he gives right now.
If it's a percentage-based, so if we were to do 83.2 times point, uh, times point 95, that should give us what you're looking for.
I think it's November.
I think it's November.
No, I still... 83.2 minus 5 is 78.2.
It might be because the way you're deriving your A, see, that doesn't make sense.
If you take, if you take, what's 5%? Okay, 5% of, um... 10, 0.5, right? But 0.5, 5% of 10, doesn't mean you take off 5, right? 5% of 10 is 0.5, until...
But we're doing 5% across. It's not a percentage, we're doing just 5% across.
Yeah, so you want to remove, you want to take off... Yes, you wanna remove, you wanna take off five percentage points.
Yes.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna apply a percentage, you wanna.
Exactly.
Okay, so then we need to, let's rerun this.
Yeah, we gotta rerun it.
Okay, so it's, it subtracts five, it subtracts five percent.
I'm so happy, I'm glad you're going here with us, right?
Yeah, because when you, when you do the percentage, it doesn't, it doesn't.
It does it off of the lower percentage, so if you're at eighty-seven, it's not doing a full hundred from the five, you're doing from the eighty-seven. So it's gonna calculate a smaller percentage.
Yeah.
That's not, and then with the same formula, and that's what that will.
Yeah.
Five percent penalty deducted off the top.
Yeah.
Good, that's the way I like it. I read an article today that said that.
Yeah, and then, the, then when you do this line now, then you have to figure out what the full amount is, 'cause if some of them drop below, some of them go up, and then what's our dollar amount change, is that right?
Yeah.
It, that's another thing, another, another thing that I, I think you can, because I see people to get help.
Thanks, Ben.
One time, I asked two, and they didn't help, they said, no, you need to, you need to.
Six forty?
Money from the city, from the CDBG, you're not gonna be helping the people.
So we got one A. Our.
Did you talk to Mr. Bishop?
And then I ended up at the school police, and I'm running for the school board.
D two.
Remember the occupancy? I've been running forever, I spent so much money, but Valerie rejected my application the first time, because it's, they know that I'm not gonna.
If the line's correct, right?
I'm not gonna be a part of it.
Okay, so we just need to fix the top when, when we do that, okay? And then we.
We put pressure on that, and we go. We gotta do that, guys.
That's right.
Yes.
You know, yes, we need to do what we need to do. I'll give you my card.
I changed it to a, changed it to a percentage, into a number, okay, there it is, now it's. Okay, now it's.
That is awesome.
I hope it says that way.
That's just scenario, alright, so now, scenario, can I copy one A and do, and just.
Get it's cool.
Do applicant's minimum, applicant requested funding? Alright, can't I get to the, uh, get to the same? So two scenarios, scenario two is applicant requested funding, we have one A, so if I, so if I just copy one A, and sort by applicant requested funding, that'll be a scenario two, right? Okay, alright, we're fixed that. Alright, so this is two A, sorted on applicant requested funding. Oh, the running total, you point, you re-point the running total to C two.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we did ask them to provide.
C two plus. So this is, uh, C three, C two, C three, alright, so then, I think we can do like this. Can we, if we add a dollar sign right there, I think it keeps it, keeps it at, uh, C.
Where the can of five, I found out what that expression is.
C six, C seven, okay, just gonna drag that down. C six plus C five, C seven plus C six, right, fifty. That formula is correct.
Yeah, some of them been there too long.
That line, that line there. No, this is pulling from B's. So this is gonna be C two, right?
That is, it's in Christmas games.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Minus C two, okay, so, dollar sign, C two. So that is minus, yes. Oh, shoot, G two. G one, because G one needs. Yeah. G two minus three. Okay, that's right, yeah. And then there goes now, okay, yeah, yeah, alright, so we've got two A, and that was two, uh, scenario three, is applicant number requested funding, so we need to change. I think we could use, I think we could, I think we could take, uh, this scenario, and just re, uh, redo policy, I'm gonna do scenario three A. Okay, and then we're gonna, we're gonna cut. Except the organization, different order, uh. I could copy and paste my score. Oh, shoot, I, I think we just need to. We need to, we need to redo, we need to apply the, apply, we need to do scenario three independent, right? Alright, so we need to, we need to deduct those five percent, so it's comparatively deducting from American track, right? So American track. From American track, Chiak. American track, Chiak. One A. Okay, that's alright. Now she's out till six-thirty. Alright, now we, now we, and now we're, we're gonna run this, filter, filter, okay. Okay, maybe, are just as small. And now we, we based our running total on E one plus C two, so we just need to do C two, right? C three plus. Applicant minimum requested, I don't send your three A.
Yes.
Uh-huh, and then E three plus C four, it's based on that column, okay? So, let's just run down that, let's make sure they all look. Yes, okay, and then some pop highlights, we get up to eighty-two right here. And then, and then we need to, oh, this formula, it's gonna be correct, G one minus C two.
Make an extend.
G two minus C three, G three minus C four. Okay, now we go negative right there. And we, uh, format cleaner. Here, okay, and that's where we cut off, right, we go negative right there. Okay, so it's just, if you see this. Alright, so one A, so we've applied, so it's going back to one A, so we applied the reduction to.
Oh, the ego is separating, yes.
Yes, all separate. Oh, I can really apply the.
I must have hit the.
Boys and girls. Natty's house, and, uh, and Wise Place. Yeah, Wise Place and Legoland, okay, and so we go negative here, looking at our formula, so we started, it's based on one A. D three plus D two. And E equals negative there, yeah, fourteen thousand remaining to disperse. This is pointing to D two. Okay, and we go negative there, okay, one A's correct, alright, and then, uh, two A. Very, uh, simpler, uh, so two A, uh, yes, uh, let's just check, okay, Octak, that's American track, uh, Chiak, Octak. Boys and Girls Club. Uh, Natty's house. Wise Place. Okay, five dollars, and then, um, um, here's our, so C two, C three plus E two.
You, you will, okay, you need a reference, I give it to you. Yeah, no, you will, you just, they have to, uh, wish for the highest, and you'll get, right?
They're like.
You'll get, and this is what I tell you, being voluntary, and this commission.
Gonna be.
And then you know what, let him give you a, a better recommendation, from the city, right? Yeah, start doing applications on everything.
Twelve.
Do you know that I love that school, because I worked nine years in there. But when I met the George Bush, and I got money for the schools.
And then three A, again, American track, Chiak.
Uh, I'm not seeing it.
Did I highlight any of the other ones?
The young.
Do the highlights matter?
He was really.
They don't matter, they're already there.
Chiak, okay, uh, then Octak, there's the five percent.
And then later on, invited me to the White House.
Natty's house, the other one.
Of course I will, and I took, I took, uh.
So Natty's house, and then Wise Place, and then Legoland.
Two spaces that nobody goes.
Okay, let's check our formulas.
And guys, who did I take, I took, I even took Loretta Sanchez, I took, I took them, and I took, uh, uh. The people from there, my, my chief, the chief of police, chief me, chief on, way back then, he was my boss, because I moved from the, uh, San Ana High School to the.
Now let's get it on the screen. So it's.
I was the school police plan coordinator. So he was so, you see, he was so. Like three times to the White House.
Two, three A to B.
That's where I was going, to think here is where the great one is.
You can go, anybody can go, go to Washington, Westin, and then, you're not gonna believe, then I have pictures and samples. Make sure to send me your information, um, the chief of police, in one of the administration at that time, and, uh, to grow, uh, we're working in a program for Ghanaian relation, we went to a conference, and the hotel was right next to the White House, so we walked to this, and then we suddenly see a lot of. Black bands, like S U A P, somebody important is come, maybe the president or something. So when they went in, I talked to the, I have my card, police car, and I said, I'm just like, not much, true? I'm just like, Naga, and this officer, this officer, you know, and I showed my card, and they say, and then I asked them, and they say, that was Ron still, and the other one, what was it, the vice president and those. I took pictures with them, they say, because, I bet you that I won't do that, I bet you that I am, and I did it. And I took pictures with all the wives, they were having dinner, and that.
No, like, you mean, in France, it's, it's.
Uh-huh.
In France. What, maybe it's reinforced? What, did you see that one where you have the bank before the press action? So it just, it's a hundred percent.
McDonald's, oh, yeah, and they were football players, so they got it.
I don't know, but probably died, too much. No, that was our, our, of course, that, Louis doesn't leave.
No, no, that was just a. Yeah, but you need your phone. I have to see my phone.
No, I think we have three thousand.
Yes.
Forty-six thousand divided by. No, no, I think it's one minus seven five, I don't know, that's a good question.
At first I, I thought I liked.
Twenty-six seventy-five, exactly, thirty-six thousand, about three hundred and seventy-two.
No, but that would make sense, because in that thirty-six, we're plus thirty-three, when you need a brief, I think it's thirty-three now.
This is application question, sir. You're talking about the.
Oh, I see.
Well, we could fund that for thirty-three, wow.
Yeah, but they score really high compared to these, because they only have thirty-three, three, two, three, and they're really high.
Well, like, can we look at this?
Right.
Alright.
What's the rationale?
Okay, uh, we're ready to present the, uh, the revised scenarios, with the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, are we ready or are we good to go?
Okay, so as you'll, uh, as you'll see on the screen here, uh, we have revised the scenarios, hold on one second. Let me save it on the desktop. Okay, we have revised this scenario, so, um, starting with scenario one A. Uh, if you recall, uh, this is, uh, this is the CRHC recommended application funding, uh, for scenario one A. Okay, uh, we applied the five percent reduction, uh, so not, it's, it's subtracting five percent off the top. It's not applying five percent reduction, it's subtracting five percent off the top. And we applied it to AmeriContract, Chia, Octak, Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, then to Natalie's House, and Wise Place, and Legal Aid. Okay, uh, when we, uh, um, when we run that scenario, uh, you will see that, uh, the organizations, uh, that are being recommended for funding have changed. Uh, nineteen, uh, organizations are, uh, still being, uh, recommended, uh, for, uh, for funding. Uh, but, uh, we end at, uh, um. See, that's saying thirteen. Yeah, thirteen organizations are being recommend, uh, would receive funding. Oh, nineteen, no, I'm sorry, nineteen. So nineteen would be, uh, recommended for funding, and we end at the Community Action Partnership of Orange County. And we have fourteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars remaining. Uh, this is different, uh, so in the previous scenario that you saw, uh, scenario number one, uh, ended, uh. Well, this moved down Wise Place. And, uh, this.
And commissioners, if you can see, feel free to get out of your seats and move closer to the screen. Commissioning, well, any commissioner, last case, feel free to.
Okay, this moved down Wise, Wise Place, uh, and, uh, from, uh, being funded, and. Moved up Community Action Partnership, Orange County. And moved down, uh, Natalie's House, befunded and moved up Second Chance of Orange County. Uh, not seeing any other major movement here. Um, yeah, not seeing any other major movements there in scenario one A. I'm gonna jump to scenario three A, because three A is the most scenario, the, 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 again, three A is what, what staff are recommending, based on the previous scenarios. But three A is that meets the minimum funding requested by the organizations. Uh, so with three A, we applied the same reductions. And, uh, with, when we apply those same reductions, okay, uh, um, the same, uh, nineteen, uh, organizations are also funded. Okay, uh, but, uh, in this, uh, scenario, uh, they, we fund them up to the minimum that they're requesting. And you are left with thirty-one thousand dollars to distribute to either another organization on the list, or to redistribute to the organizations that are being funded. Uh, and then the same movements that I mentioned previously happen in scenario three A. So, um, uh, let me see. Uh, Second Chance of Orange County moves up and receives funding. Community Action Partnership of Orange County moves up and receives funding. Uh, Wise Place moves down and does not receive funding. And, uh, Natalie's House, uh, Neutral Ground, uh, moves down and does not receive funding. Uh, scenario two A, uh, is, uh, uh, here, presented to you. Uh, they, uh, this, uh, leaves us with, uh, and if you could just ignore that red line, uh, right there, okay? That, that, that doesn't matter, uh, a- any, anymore, okay? Uh, the, the red line would be here. Okay, uh, in two A, okay, uh, um, uh, twelve organizations are funded. Okay, um, there's, uh, uh, let me see the movement in two A. So in two A.
Johnson.
Two A, there's, uh, no movement. The same organizations that were being recommended previously are, uh, being, uh, funded in this scenario. Uh, AmeriContract moves down from first, being ranked first, to the second. Octak, uh, no, I'm sorry, Chia, uh, uh, moves, uh, down, uh, one. Octak, uh, moves down, uh, two spots. Those are the only movement in the, uh, in the top there, and, uh, but the funding, uh, the funding recommendations remain, uh, nearly, they remain exactly the same as previously for, uh, as the previous scenario number two.
Leslie, can you go back to scenario, uh, three A, and I'd like to see how much, uh, around that money there would be?
Uh, three A, uh, there's thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars remaining to, uh, to distribute. And, um, yeah, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
But that's around the same amount as the.
That's the exact, yeah, that's the exact same amount as.
That's the exact same though?
Yeah. Yeah, cause it's thirty, yeah, thirty-one, three, twenty, sixteen hundred and forty-eight would be.
I'm gonna have a check in here.
Or maybe if it moved and it still kept the, uh, the cells for that one.
So if you keep in mind, so Second Chance, Orange County, and Community Action Partnership were both at thirty, thirty thousand. No, I'm sorry, Wise Place and Community Action Partnership were both at thirty thousand, so Wise Place moved down, Community Action Partnership moved up, so that's a wash, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Second Chance, Orange County moved up for fifty. Okay, yeah, so that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I, I have a recommendation that I would like to make, and then I'll open it up to discussion and, um, alternate recommendations. But I would like to recommend that we, um, go with staff's recommendation, uh, which is option three A, which allows us to fund nineteen organizations. Uh, and then we're seeing that there's a remnant of thirty-one thousand.
Three hundred and twenty dollars. So I would like to see that money go to a twentieth organization. Um, I understand that Natalie's House and the Heritage Museum of Orange County both had minimum, um, requests that were above that. But my recommendation to staff would be to first offer that, uh, about thirty thousand to Natalie's House, and see if they would like to, to figure out a way to make it work. Um, if they're unable to do that, to then offer it to Heritage Museum of Orange County, see if they can make it work. And if they can't, then, then it should be offered to Santa Ana Extreme Softball, who actually requested around thirty thousand dollars. So that is my recommendation, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners to see what, um, what they think, and to see if they would like to all, offer any alternative recommendations. Commissioner Perez?
Yes, Madam Chair, I actually agree with you that we should go with the number three, um, I'm in favor of that. Um, however, I really, really, um, appreciated the, uh, Heritage Museum talk about, uh, their tool program. And I just feel for a lot of our community, uh, specific here in Santana, the opportunity for families to go to the farm, uh, get, uh, the time bank and, and the tools. Uh, was, uh, a program that I really, really would want to see funded. And then my second vote would actually be to the softball extreme. I think, uh, we're given a lot of opportunity for STEAM, for our students, but as we know, a lot of our, uh, students, athletes, where do they go? What opportunity do they get, specifically our females population, uh, and to have a, a softball league that really can, uh, able, uh, our female opportunity for empowerment, enhancement. And opportunity for, uh, college opportunity through that, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Vasquez.
I, um, I also favor the three A recommendation, and what, uh, Commissioner Perez just said, if there's any leftover for the Santa Ana Extreme, um, uh, softball program.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Vasquez, can you, can you clarify your direction on the remainder?
Softball. The softball program.
So, so you would want to give thirty-one thousand dollars to Santa Ana Extreme, the remaining thirty-one thousand dollars to Santa Ana Extreme?
Yes.
And bypass the Heritage Museum and Natalie's House?
No.
Oh, Commissioner Vasquez, you can, yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
So Commissioner Vasquez, um, the recommendation that I had made was that we go in the order of these rankings, so. Offer that money to Natalie's House, and then the Heritage Museum of Orange County, and then Santa Ana Extreme. The recommendation that Commissioner Perez made was to, um, bypass Natalie's House and offer that money to the Heritage Museum of Orange County, and then Santa Ana Extreme. And all we heard you mention was Santa Ana Extreme, so staff is wondering if you would.
On the second one.
So Commissioner Perez's recommendation?
Yes, yes.
To offer that to the Heritage Museum of Orange County and then Santa Ana Extreme?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you'd like the remainder to go to Santa Ana Extreme?
No, to, first to be offered to the Heritage Museum of Orange County.
Okay, okay, same as.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Limon.
I completely agree with you, Commissioner Ramos.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif.
Um, I agree with, uh, three A, and I would like to see the additional, or the leftover money go directly to Santa Ana Extreme. As that, um, completely funds their minimum request.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif, Commissioner Aginaga.
I'm agree with, uh, Commissioner Perez and Commissioner, uh, Tardif, and, uh.
Uh, that.
So th- those are two different recommendations.
Those are different recommendations.
So who, um, the, what would you like to happen with the remaining thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars?
Go to the, uh, heritage.
So offer it to them first?
Yes, and then to the San Ana.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fraser.
Um, I have a question before I offer my recommendation. Um, what do we know about the structure of Natalie's House?
Uh, s-
Anybody?
Can you, uh, maybe ask a more specific question?
What do we know about the, 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 the business plan structure, the, the personnel structure of Natalie's House? What do we know about that, other than what they've submitted on their application? What do we as a commission know about this person, or about this entity that we're getting ready to give thousands of dollars to?
Is that a staff question, or do you want me to read the application and, and, and I have it right here?
Yeah, cause I don't have the applications.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez.
Thank you.
So they have a board of directors, exec director is Nati Alvarado, program coordinator is Marlene Marquez, CYA is Ramon Ferdando. Uh, CIW is Nate Alvarado, I don't know if that's his son. Do we know?
I, I don't know.
And then, uh, we have another CYA, Angel, and then C, Chief Operational Officer, is Bree Alvarado, so, uh, don't know if that's his daughter or not.
Thank you, does that answer your question?
It does answer my question, and I, I give my recommendation pending, uh, further understanding of whether those Alvarados are related. Um, I'd like to see Danny over, over, uh, the thirty-one thousand. I like the idea of the borrowing barn as well, um, because we have such a, a low income population around here, I see where that definitely adds value and merit to becoming part of the community. So I'd like to definitely see that, uh, receive some of that funding.
So.
But I would go with, uh, scenario three A as well.
So you would like that money to be offered to the Heritage Museum of Orange County, and if they can't make it work, then to Santa Ana Extreme?
Um, I didn't even bring Santa Ana Extreme into it, um. I think I would be more interested in seeing it go to Crystalis after Heritage Museum if they turn it down.
Okay. So I'm jotting down everybody's recommendations, so far we have four different ones. Commissioner Garcia.
Okay, I am in support of scenario three A, um, and looking at my evaluation and my rankings here, um, my question is, are we able to spread that leftover money between three organizations? Or do we have to select a certain?
We can do it however we like.
Okay, so I would say the summer program, um, Heritage Museum, and Santa Extreme softball.
Hold on one second, okay, so you're, 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 are, are agreeing with recommend, uh, three A, but you'd, I'd like to allocate the remainder equally to?
So if you, um, like you have it here, and, um. So Natalie's House, Heritage Museum, and then the softball.
So offer it to them in that order? Or divide the money? If we split the thirty thousand between those three, they would each receive ten thousand, because they're not being funded at, um, twenty amount, as of now.
And do we know if they'll accept less than their minimum funding?
So Commissioner Garcia, can you, uh, restate your recommendation?
Well, I was gonna say, split the funds between the three, but I'm just saying that I need to rank them.
Well, as of now, if, if we moved forward with your recommendation, they would each get ten thousand dollars, and ten thousand dollars only, because they're not receiving any funding as of now.
Yeah, and our minimum funding required is thirty thousand, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend ten thousand to any.
Okay, okay. Then. I would say in this case, Santa Ana Extreme. I thought they had a really strong case.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Um, so we have, there were four recommendations made overall, and there were three of those that had at least two commissioners supporting each one of them. Uh, so we'll start off with those three. So, the first recommendation was made by me and supported by Commissioner Limon, which was to first offer the money, the, uh, the ser- the left, well, the money that's. was to first offer the money, the, the left, well, the money that's left to Nattie's House and then Heritage Museum of Orange County and then Santa Ana Extreme. That was one recommendation that was made. The second recommendation that was made was made by Commissioner Perez, which was to first offer that money to the Heritage Museum of Orange County and then to Santa Ana Extreme. And that was supported by himself, Commissioner Vasquez and Commissioner Aginaga. And then the last recommendation that was made, which was made by Commissioner Tardif, was to only offer that money to Santa Ana Extreme and that was supported by Commissioner Tardif and Commissioner Garcia.
What about Commissioner...
Limon? I'm sorry? Commissioner Vasquez?
Yes, no, the...
Our student commissioner?
Our student commissioner.
Our student commissioner, Commissioner Limon, supported my recommendation, which was to offer the money to Nattie's House and then the Heritage Museum of Orange County and then Santa Ana Extreme.
And Commissioner Frazier recommended another option, which was to offer it, the remainder to the Heritage and then to Chrysalis?
Yes.
But we're not...
Yeah, I, the only reason I did not mention Commissioner Frazier's was because he was the only commissioner that supported that.
How does that happen?
So those, the three options that I presented are options that were supported by at least two commissioners. I would prefer that we get down to two options and then vote between those two, just so that it's clear to see where the votes are going.
Unofficial vote.
Are unofficial...
Sure, just to clarify, we are in a work-study session, so you know, while I appreciate, you know, trying to narrow this down as much as possible, you don't have to come to a final decision tonight. In fact, it'd be better not to because we want to, or we need to have that vote and that final discussion at the next meeting.
Well, based off whatever vote we took today, you would then have to approach these organizations correct and see if they're willing to even consider that minimum funding?
Yeah, I mean, we've got direction on three, we have your direction that everyone, everyone is in favor of 3A. And, and so we have that direction and then it's just a matter of the remainder. So that again, we, we would like direction on the remainder, so we can know whether or not we're gonna approach Nattie's House or Heritage Museum regarding the remainder. So that, that's the direction we're looking for, either Nattie's House or Heritage Museum.
Could the recommendation be to approach all three of them? And then here, if they would be willing to take that money or not?
We don't recommend that, no.
No, okay.
Madam Chair, before we make that vote, just for quick clarification as we're wrapping this up, the Albee Dalhai, there was also an email saying that they would only take the sixty-eight thousand, is that correct? What was the minimum they would take? Because right now, if, we might have additional money that all three of them, because if...
They, they, so you, 3A gives them the...
At 3A, that's the minimum they would take?
Yeah, yeah. The sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven.
3A is funding each applicant that makes a cutoff at their minimum.
Perfect, I just wanted to make that clarification, yeah.
Is there a recommendation from anybody on the commission right now?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Perez.
I would recommend that the museum be the first organization to be asked. I believe Extreme would be number two and Nattie's House, number three.
Thank you. Are there any alternative recommendations to be made? Seeing as there are none, we'll take a very informal vote on that. So all of those that feel comfortable with approaching the organizations in the order that Commissioner Perez recommended, which is first approaching the Heritage Museum of Orange County and then approaching Santa Ana Extreme and then approaching Nattie's House, please raise your hand high.
What about the Santa Ana Streams?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
That was mentioned as the second person.
That they were mentioned as a second group that would be... So we had a clear majority on that. So staff, is that, can you please state what direction you've received from us?
Okay, so the commission is, through this work-study session, has provided us with direction to return to the commission on March twenty-seventh with scenario 3A as the recommendation for, by the commission. The remaining, remainder of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars will be offered to, we will confirm with the Heritage Museum of Orange County that they are willing to accept that amount. And if they are not willing to accept that amount, we will confirm with Santa Ana Extreme whether or not they would accept that amount. And if they do not accept that amount, we will, we will ask Nattie's House, confirm, confirm with Nattie's House if they would accept that amount. And, and the, again, that will officially be brought back to the commission on March twenty-seventh.
Thank you. How much money can you, are we talking about?
Thirty-one thousand.
Eight hundred and seventy-two thousand?
Thirty-one.
Oh, sorry, thirty-one thousand. Okay, and then we have, so, did you guys get that? We got that down, right? Okay.
And then can, can we just, I would like to ask that staff send us 3A with the new, the new order, we can receive that via email?
After they communicate with them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's no, that's no problem. Yeah, we could do that. It's unofficial, unofficial recommendations. I, I wouldn't suggest sharing it or...
Yeah.
Is the local...
Well, it will, everything that was shared with us tonight, will that be later included in the minutes for this meeting?
So we'll have a...
That are made available online?
We'll have a summary of the discussion. When we return on March twenty-seventh, you're only gonna see 3A.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So the public won't see these recommendations? These previous recommendations?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope. And then we just need direction on two other, two other items, Dan. The, okay, so HUD, every year, right, they, they allocate, they approve, they adopt the budget, no, Congress adopts the budget, right? And then they approve, authorize the funds for, for HUD. And then once HUD gets that authorized funding level, then they notify our local participating jurisdictions and participating jurisdictions across the country what their funding amounts are going to be for their CDPG program. We have not yet received that official notification of what exactly our funding amount is going to be for fiscal year nineteen twenty. So as you've been informed in several times, the eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars that you're working with is an estimate. Now, we, based on the national budget that was approved by Congress, we expect that amount to either remain the same or slightly increase, very slightly increase, maybe five to ten percent, but generally to remain the same. So we'd like to seek direction from the commission on that, whether or not we should, the budget should be proportionally increased or decreased from the estimated funding levels to match the actual allocation amount? Or, or to, to fund an additional organization on the list? So let's say we get, let's say we get ten thousand dollars additional funds. Do we have, do we have your direction to proportionally increase the funding for all nineteen organizations? Or would you like us to, to add, add an additional organization to be funded? If it's ten thousand dollars is an easier decision, fifty thousand dollars gets more complicated, right? Fifty thousand dollars you could use to fund an organization. You don't have to be, you could, you could direct us a third, you know, if you get enough funding to fund an additional organization, then do that. But if you do not, then allocate it proportionally. So there's really three, three options that we're looking at and we need direction by the commission on.
So I have, I see questions, but I want to ask them just very quickly. Would you have an accurate number for us before or by the next meeting?
No.
No, okay. Commissioner Aginaga?
I would suggest to get an additional nonprofit organization to help the community. Another one that we already funded. We can choose another one.
Thank you, Commissioner Aginaga. Commissioner Frazier?
So I just, I want to understand the, the number play here. So we're looking at eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-three, which is a guesstimation. We might receive up to ten to fifteen percent above that or it may stay the same. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we stand to gain...
Or it could be decreased. That's also a chance.
We hope not.
We hope not.
So that's a, at minimum, based on that scenario, that's minimum of eighty-seven hundred and twenty-five dollars additional funding at ten percent that we would be getting. So we don't have the option of opening up another nonprofit for funding at that point because it's lower than the thirty thousand required to fund, correct? Because we have now allocated all of the monies.
Uh, the eighty, it would actually be, so eight hundred and seventy-two thousand times ten percent would be, would be eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven thousand? It's always carrying the one. Okay.
Yeah.
We can fund two.
So that we would be able to fund two more and with a little bit left over? Okay, okay. That helps, thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to make a recommendation and it may be similar to a recommendation that was made last year, but depending on what that, that amount is, let's say it's forty thousand, my recommendation would be to fund another organization at their minimum. And if there is ten thousand left over, then divide that ten thousand proportionally amongst all those funded. But if that increases as much as eighty-seven thousand, then fund an additional two organizations and then divide the remainder proportionally amongst all those organizations that are funded. Are there any commission, Commissioner Perez?
Thank you for the information. I just think as a commissioner, I actually would have liked that information before we voted because I think what it does, it allows us, as we're looking at these three other organizations, it could have been like, same time knowing, maybe it's all three of them that we would have kind of went in that route. But I actually, I'm, I struggle funding organizations repetitively. I honestly think we need to provide new organizations, new agencies and new services to the table. And I, I also don't think a lot of people know of this funding, even though you do a great job of getting it out, but, you know, in my short time being here and just talking to people of the work that I'm doing, like, we didn't even know those funds were available. We didn't realize, you know? And I'm like, well, you gotta go on the website. I really talked to you about it, I'm a commissioner, but go on the website. But I really think it's potentially substantial money. I mean, up to eighty-seven thousand, even if we're at forty-five thousand, I mean, we're talking a lot of money here. I, so I also agree with our Madam Chair is, I also would like to see which programs are doing a really, really good job, where we can say, you know what, we have some additional money because you're doing such a good job. And I think in this process, and I think that's where it's key and critical to have staff part of this process, is you might know of some of these organizations that are doing awesome, an additional ten, fifteen, twenty thousand would help them tremendously in this process. So I know I'm just kind of talking out loud, but I think those two things would be something that I would highly recommend us to take a look at. But, yes, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. I have a question for staff. Do you need direction on this today or is there a way that you can come back at another point to let us know how much money, how, if there is an increase, how much that increase is, so then we can decide if there's a specific organization that we would like the money to go to?
We would, we would, we'll, we will need the, the direction, the official vote at, on March twenty-seventh. And in terms of when we, before we go to city council, we'll take that direction and we'll revise the, the scenario before it goes to city council. But our deadline for the submission of our annual action plan is coming up and, and in order to stay on, stay on track, we need the direction, the official direction by the commission on March twenty-seventh.
When is the deadline for the annual action plan?
It's May fifteenth.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Perez, I know there were a few things that you mentioned.
And, and there wasn't any kind of specifics? So I, there's nothing specific in regards to that, but as I just kind of had this process and one thing that I'm struggling with a little bit and I think, being new, as we receive this new funding and we talk about staff and we talk about, you know, work, and I heard a lot of these organizations kind of come up, I, I just, it reminded me of the silo and everyone, I still believe, is working in these silos. And I was very disappointed not to see more organizations work together with a proposal. And one of the things that I've seen that be very, very successful, specifically with processes like this, is where all the partners kid together on a quarterly basis. They share ideas and they learn to work together in this community. And I don't know if funds need to be allocated specifically to an organization or it could be a nonprofit that could help support that process. I don't know specifically what the restrictions are with the CDPG funding, but I think having an organization that helps support the communication, the coordination of services, where it's a coordinated support and a coordinated effort, I think we're gonna maximize our dollars and, and reach more of our residents.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Perez, for that, for that direction. The, what we're hearing in terms of the, the increase in funding, what we are hearing is, is that there is favor to, if we have sufficient funds, to fund the next organization on the list. And if we don't receive sufficient funds, then to proportionally allocate the remainder to the organizations that are funded as set.
That was a recommendation that I made.
Yeah, my, my question is, what's our regulations on these additional funds? Is it specifically to receive and give out?
Yes, to eligible nonprofit organizations.
Under our strategic plan?
Under our strategic plan for, for the set aside for nonprofits.
I'd like to make a comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My recommendation would be to simply distribute any additional funds proportionally.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. Commissioner Frazier? So we now have two recommendations. We'll take a vote on those.
I like the recommendation from, from Mr. Perez, from Commissioner Perez, in that if we do have some nonprofits that are meeting or exceeding expectations and we have a marginal amount of money left after funding possibly up to two additional nonprofits, that if we do have a small amount of money, maybe it might be a good incentive for those nonprofits that are meeting and exceeding to also show the other nonprofits that, hey, if I start meeting my numbers, maybe the possibility of, of that incentive is there for me too.
So I, I have, I don't know how I feel about that recommendation because how is staff to decide, and I'm sure you, you have numbers to go off to see who is beating their numbers, but if there are four organizations that are exceeding their expectations, how is staff to decide which of those four?
We're good at assigning percentages. I think if you're meeting or exceeding your numbers, you're meeting or exceeding them by a percentage point. And that percentage point is based on, on the number that you said that you would help.
So that's, my question is, if there's ten thousand dollars and there's four organizations that are meeting their numbers, who gets those ten thousand dollars?
You divide it by four.
Yeah, divide that, divide that by four.
Equally, you just do it equally.
And then wait your pers, you can wait, you can do it equally or you can wait your percentages. If somebody's blown the top out of their numbers and they're providing services to two-hundred-and-fifty people and they said they could do it to seventy-five, then they're, they're truly exceeding their, their numbers and can definitely use that funding.
So if we move forward with that recommendation, would staff want those organizations to be named today?
So you would want to allocate the remainder as an incentive to higher, higher performing organizations?
That is a recommendation that we're entertaining as of now. Commissioner Aginaga?
I'm sorry?
So that's just a recommendation. We haven't decided that that's what we're gonna do yet.
Thank you, because you're talking about eighty thousand dollars. You're not gonna be doing, giving the money to the same ones that we already gave them. We're talking about a new nonprofit organizations. We don't know because we don't know how much money.
Yeah, so we haven't decided yet what would happen with X amount of money. But I want to ensure that if this recommendation is one that the commission moved forward with, that staff has sufficient direction to be able to do that.
Yes.
So staff, to what extent would you need direction? Would you need organizations to be named today or do you just, what type of, yeah?
Yeah, well, so what I, we would prefer the organizations to be, to be named if you, unless you delegate that authority to us and we'll, we'll, we'll allocate the funds to the highest performing organizations that... to the highest performing organizations that...as we define.
So Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Frazier.
Just to clarify, because I don't think that you understood what I was saying. If we do get the $87,000 to fund the two additional ones that we're looking at possibly a 50 and possibly a 30, that's still going to leave an amount of money left over. That's the money that I'm talking about allocating to people that meet or exceed their numbers for the year.
So Commissioner Frazier, your recommendation is different from Commissioner Perez's, where his was to just take all of the money and then give it to those high performing organizations. So we now have...
Entire 87?
The entire X amount.
X amount, okay.
The extra amount, not the whole.
Yeah, it is different than that.
Yeah, so as of now, we have two recommendations. I'd like to bring it down to two and then we can have an informal vote. So Commissioner Frazier, Commissioner Perez, would you all like to join one another? Or do you want to keep your recommendations as is?
I...I'm a coach by nature. I think we need to respect staff and support staff. I think we all here are saying a lot of the similar things. If there's additional money, I would rely on the ability for staff here to say, hey, we have these organizations that are doing a great job. We already have three that we laid that if we have additional money. So it's really, in a sense, we've done our due diligence. We've given them a list of three organizations that we would like to fund. And additionally, if there's extra money and we have high performing organizations that have been identified by the work that you are seeing, to say, hey, we have... If that money then ends up at 20,000, we don't know what that money's going to end up. But I think what's going to happen from a commission standpoint, we need to give them the direction to move forward with it. It's going to be hard for us already to name the organizations now. I think giving them the ability to name those organizations as they see fit as we move forward. So my recommendation is very similar to what you talked about. We look at the top, the next three that...so it goes down exactly what we've talked about. If we have the extra money, we're talking about if we get the extra 85. And then from there, whatever money we have left over, because if we get 60, 85, and we give 30 and 30, we still have 25,000. So then you'd have 25,000 to allocate to those organizations that you see fit that are high performing. That is my recommendation.
So Commissioner Perez, I want to confirm then that we're making essentially the same recommendation?
Yes.
Which is to fund one or more, one or two organizations?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I agree with that.
So as of now, then we have one recommendation. So is anybody opposed to that?
I am, Madam Chair. I am opposed to that.
Commissioner Tardif, can you...would you like to explain your opposition?
Yes. This commission has been run by the commissioners and it's been set up that way. And I think to ask staff to make an opinion, that is completely different from the way this commission has been operating. We have been operating to make the decision, not dependent on staff, other than to give us information. I do not agree with asking staff to make subjective recommendations at all. That's opposite the direction we've been heading.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. So I'll restate the recommendation, the last recommendation that was made. I'll ask everybody to raise their hands if they're in support. And if we don't have a simple majority, we can seek alternative recommendations. Commissioner Frazier, would you like to say something?
Would you be more in agreement if the staff just provided us the data of the performance of the nonprofits when they came back to us to let us know what the actual dollar amount that...if we do get a dollar amount of surplus? That way, we can make the decision and they're providing us the data at that point?
So I think we...it would be too late. So that was what was asked. There wouldn't be time for staff to come back to us.
There's not time for that.
So no, that wouldn't work for me.
So I'll just restate the recommendation that I made and that Commissioner Perez is also making, which is if there is additional funding, if there is enough money to fund another organization, that is a priority. If there is enough to fund two, that is a priority. And then any money outside of that would be divided amongst organizations at staff's discretion. So if you are in support of that, please raise your hand high. So we have a majority and that is the direction that we are providing to staff. Staff, would you like to restate what you've heard?
Yes, so fund the next highest scoring organization or organizations and allocate the remainder to the highest performing organizations as we see fit.
Yes.
Okay. And the...in terms of the next highest scoring organizations, we are going to... We do intend to go with the Santa and Extreme and then Natty's House.
In that order?
Wait a minute.
No, 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 no. It's going to be first...
Well, no, Heritage.
Yeah, Heritage Museum.
But Heritage is going to get the remainder.
Santa Ana, Extreme, and then...
I...yes, I'm sorry. Let me just restate it. To Heritage, Heritage and then Santa and Extreme and then Natty's House.
And then if there was additional money, then the next highest scoring organization.
Yes, yes, yep. Okay, and then lastly, just one remaining...just two remaining items. Okay, just two remaining items. We're just informing the commission. If an organization declines funding at a...at any point in the process after the commission approves the awards on March 27th, staff is going to award funds to the next organization on the list. So same thing that you just voted on first. You gave direction to staff on the...on if there's an increase in our funds and then...
And just to clarify, that is...that would be pretty unlikely, because we're funding everybody at their minimum requested funding.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And then, yeah, it would...yes, exactly.
But it's a possibility. It happened last year, or this current year, as a matter of fact. Yeah, one organization declined funding.
Well, then we can divide it about the...
So they'll follow the direction that we just provided for excess funding?
Yep. And then, just again, to remind the commission, that $1,648 that you're seeing there, so the $31,000 is going to be offered to Heritage Museum first and then Santa and Extreme and then Natty's House. That $1,648 is going to be allocated equally to all the organizations. So just unless you want us...
No, no. So that was either 31,000 to another organization or 1,648 divided amongst those that were already receiving funding, correct?
Oh, right, yeah.
It'd be great if we could do that.
Sorry, no problem. Yes, exactly. That's right. That's it, actually. With that, we have the exact direction from the commission. So again, direction from the commission is scenario 3A, that the $31,320 remainder is offered to the Heritage Museum of Orange County first and then to Santa and Extreme second and then to Natty's House third. If there is an increase in funding, we will fund the next highest scoring organization and allocate the remainder to the highest performing organizations already funded.
Thank you.
And with that, we greatly appreciate...we've been here for three hours.
So the meeting's not over yet?
Okay, no, I know. But we do want to just express our appreciation to the commission. You know, every year we improve upon this process. And if you, you know, this is just a work...this was just a work study. And so if you do change your mind, you know, after receiving the scenarios or anything like that, totally at your discretion and you could give direction, completely direct direction to staff on March 27th. But we will return with 3A and the other items as directed by the commission today.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to public comments. So I said the meeting wasn't over, because we have a few members of the public that express interest in providing public comments. So does the public have any comments they wish to share with the commission? Please, now that you have three minutes to speak, you can speak in English or Spanish. You can come up as a group. So I invite you to come up now. Would you like to provide public comments? Okay, if you can come to the front?
Good evening. My name is Janet Juarez.
My name is Marta Aldana.
My name is Liana Almasan.
We are currently seniors at Los Amigos High School. We found the meeting very interesting for the fact that everyone was discussing in a respectful manner. And we also admire how everyone collaborated to come to an agreement. This inspires us to acknowledge that us and every individual has a voice that should be taken into consideration. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can please fill out a speaker card and then just hand it to our recording secretary. Thank you. Moving on to staff member comments.
Again, just thanking the commission for the time. You know, every...I can't emphasize enough that every year we improve upon the process and spent now 12 and a half hours, 12 hours or so, on this important process in addition to the time you spent reviewing and scoring the applications. And there are limited funds that we're allocating in the community extreme importance and really, really appreciate and sincerely appreciate all the time, commitment, and dedication of our commission.
Thank you. Are there any additional staff member comments? No, thank you. Moving on to commission member comments, I'll start with Commissioner Tardif.
I'd like to thank the staff for the presentation, the way they laid it out for us to consider. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the dais for their cooperation. And I do have a request of staff, if it would be possible, to see the process or contract, maybe both of the people who you contract with to verify that the participants are meeting their stated goals or are making an effort towards that and that the figures that they are turning in are accurate as far as possible. Can we see that contract in process?
Just to clarify, I'd like to see the agreement.
I'd like to see the agreement and all the documentation, RFP, what your requirements were and the contract.
Okay, so the agreement, the application from the previous year, and what else?
Did you put out an RFP for that?
That was the application that the commission saw last year.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay, so applica...
I mean, I'd like it to be provided to the commission, to all the commissioners.
Okay, so the application, the agreement, and then...and for which organization are you looking for? Are you just looking for the general template agreement?
For the organization that is contracted to verify.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. For...okay, okay, yes. Okay, so for our agreement for our auditor?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So MDG agreement and the application that the commission... Oh, you want to see the RFP that was issued for that contract?
Right, and what your requirements were for that process.
Got it, got it, yes. Okay, we can provide that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. Commissioner Aginaga?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank the staff. You've always been so wonderful on patients. And I would like to thank especially the students in the back. This is my honor to have you guys here listening to us and thank us for doing our community duty. We chose to do this out of our hearts to help the community. And you're going to be leaders in the future, because if you're here is because you are interested. If you are, feel welcome to apply. And you know us, I give you my card and you can call me anytime. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Aginaga. Commissioner Frazier?
I definitely wanted to mimic thank yous to the staff for quick and timely responses on the information that we've asked. I know we kind of...last year and this year, we kind of pummel you guys with questions and you've always been really gracious in your responses and quick with the data. So I really appreciate that. I also wanted to thank my fellow commissioners that have done this for exponential amount of number of years, more than myself. This is my second year and the process is starting to kind of feel the process a little bit now, so I'm feeling more comfortable. So I can only imagine, as I get a number of years under my belt, how that'll increase. So I wanted to thank you. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Garcia?
I'm just going to reiterate what everybody's been saying. Thank you to everybody that was involved in this process. Thank you to the commissioners for your contributions and insight. I appreciate all the new knowledge and what you bring to the table. Chairperson Ramos, you did an excellent job in facilitating this whole process. Excellent. Thank you to Mikel and David for answering our questions via email and here. We appreciate your patience. To our visitors today, or guests, I should say. Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Perez?
I just want to echo. Thank you very much, staff. You did a really unbelievable job and thank you for being able to do some quick adjustments and some changes in the amount of time that you did. For our visitors, your voice matters. So please, join us. If you have anything to say, it matters significantly. Your voice is really big and we believe in you and we're here to serve you. So please, anytime you have any questions or comments, come to us and talk to us. To my colleagues on the board, it's been an honor and privilege in the short amount of time to just be part of this process. Thank you for your just support for this process. And I do believe that as commissioners, our job is to move policies. But I'm also a strong believer that our staff is an extension of the work that we do. So I think at times, we need to trust them, believe in them, and they're actually working with us, not against us. And thank you, staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Vasquez?
Well, I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair, and fellow commissioners and staff for your hard work again this year.
Thank you, Commissioner Vasquez. Commissioner Limon?
I'd like to thank the staff and the commissioners for being so keen to detail, especially the staff for being very resourceful and, I guess, patient. And I'd like to thank the commissioners for their insight, because as you guys ask varying questions, I begin to...it begins to expand my mind on about what certain issues I should think about, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Limon. And I would just like to echo the thank you to staff. Thank you, Jitson, David, Mikel...Mikel, am I pronouncing your name correctly? And everyone here, I know it's been a long night, but thank you for making the numbers work when we decided that we wanted to see the numbers. Also, thank you to my fellow commissioners. Thank you for all the great questions that you've asked. I would like to ask that staff add to the March 27th agenda, the creation of a subcommittee to review the CDBG process. And that subcommittee would be tasked with reviewing the application questions, reviewing the evaluation questions, and creating a rubric for next year's CDBG process. And last but not least, I would like to thank our members of the public. Thank you for being here. Thank you for staying three hours with us. And thank you for being brave enough to come to the front and give public comments, even though you hadn't planned to. So thank you very much. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March 27th at 4:30 PM at the Council Chambers, 22 Civic Center Plaza, Santa Ana, California.